And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone to our August 7th council meeting. Please note the council's in full attendance, and I have to mention that Dr. Young is spending his birthday with us this evening. Today's his birthday, so.
Thanks for that.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
First item on our agenda is items from council. Anything in particular? No one has anything on their mind, okay? We can move on then. Our next item is citizens communication. Anyone would like to come forward and speak about anything at all, now'd be the time. Okay, there we have one. Just state your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Raquel Garza, and I had recently put in an application for Planning Commission Committee, and I just wanted to introduce myself and express an interest in becoming a committee member, and just state my passion for it and how I feel as though becoming a member would unite the Workforce Board, which I am employee of, and the community. Because hearing how there's gaps identified within the workforce, and how the development of the city can potentially grow, it just expresses my desire to emphasize the need of more opportunities. If y'all have any questions for me, I would gladly take that at this time. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming down this evening.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Okay, no further citizens communications. We'll close citizens communications and go into ordinances.
Item C1. Item C1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 2 with Victoria City Code to adopt a retention schedule for the city records in compliance with the Texas Local Government Code, Section 203.026, and the Texas State Library and Archive Records retention schedules, including a provision that the city code will be amended automatically to reflect updates and revisions made by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on C1. If anyone would like to speak to this item only, now would be the time. Okay, I see no one, so we'll close that public hearing and entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Are there any questions?
This is just a changing of the wording to comply with the state, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And adopting two additional schedules as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, ayes have it. C3 on my agenda.
Yes. That is a resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant 2018-2019 One-Year Action Plan, and authorizing the city manager to submit all required documentation for fiscal year 2018-19 CDPG program and amendments thereto to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and declaring an effective date.
We also have a public hearing on this item, so we'll open the public hearing now on C3.
C2.
C2 on the post agenda.
I'm sorry, I have the old agenda anyway. Anyone like to speak to this item? Come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing on C2, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt C2.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? I believe this has already been presented to us, so. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay. Next.
Item C3 is an ordinance adopting a moratorium and prohibition on accepting, processing, or acting upon applications for any game room permits as described in Section 14-146 of the Victoria City Code, suspending the operation of conflicting ordinances, declaring an emergency, providing for publication, enforcement, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C3. If anyone would like to speak to this item, now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
Move adopt.
Second.
We have motion, second. Discussion, I know I'd kind of like to have some. Do y'all have questions for the chief? Or chief, would you just like to talk first?
We could do it either way you like.
Your write-up was really good, so.
I was only gonna just repeat my write-up, so.
Okay.
I do have a question that somebody asked me. If for some reason one of these game rooms that's already open closes, do they have to come back to the new law and they don't, they can't reopen?
If they were to close during the moratorium period, then they would be subject to whatever new ordinance was enacted by the end of the year.
Okay.
So they could apply again, but they would be subject to any new regulations or criteria that the new ordinance would establish if a new ordinance were to be established and adopted by council.
Okay. And what happens if, say, y'all guys went out there and closed them? Will they be allowed to open up again, or what process will happen then?
Well, it would most likely be the legal process would kick in in violation of the state laws governing the illegal operation of gambling. So that process would go off. Typically, what we've seen is that they typically shut down for a period of time, and then if they were to be convicted, then we would start a revocation process on them. But most of the time, they close down on their own after they've been subject of a criminal investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask for just a synopsis of your great write-up, just for the people that watch?
Well, currently, right now, I'm requesting city council to adopt this moratorium, and no new game room permits for the next, till the end of the calendar year. What we're seeing is that there's a multitude of little issues that are starting to become problematic. We have 25 game rooms operating in the city right now. That number comes up and down depending on, and recently, there seems to have been a significant increase in the number of permits. And what we're noticing in the permit process is, you know, we're spending an awful lot of time processing these. And so we're seeing, on a minor scale, we're seeing that the actual processing of the permits is costing us a heck of a lot more than the permit fees, so we're not covering our costs. But we're also seeing a lot of problematic type of applications where we feel, or I feel, since I'm part of the process, that a lot of the information that we're seeing, there's times when people will come in and they don't know anything about game room permits, game room businesses. Somebody told them to come in and pay the $25 and get this, their name on the permit. They don't know anything about, you know, the city's ordinance on game rooms. Typically, I'm always reviewing that with them. So those are, that's problematic, and then we don't, oftentimes, we're not, we don't feel in that process that we're really getting the true, the true operator identified. In several of the cases in which we've made arrests, the person that has issued, been issued the permit was not even on-site. I mean, they're off-site person in Houston or something like so. So we're seeing some issues with that. I recently denied one individual that had an ongoing criminal case in another city, and he was told basically, come to Victoria and open one there while he has his case going on in another city. So when denied, I think he probably only, he went maybe outside, was gone, I don't know, April how long? A few minutes?
Yes, he was just gone a few minutes, he backed into my office, picked up a new application.
Somebody else got another one.
Somebody else filled out.
What we're seeing is that there's some real issues there. And then we're seeing some operational issues on how some of the game rooms are operating, which are, again, are problematic. And I could go through all of that, but it's listed in my write-up. But it, I feel like what's needed is a little stop break time, take a look at the process, clean it up a little bit, look at some best practices, maybe some areas where additional signage can be done, and really try to at least identify who's operating, who's doing business in the city of Victoria in their gamer permits.
Right now, our ordinance doesn't require Secretary of State filings for corporation or whoever might own, to prove ownership.
That's correct, it does not.
It's just your word that you own it, and you're operating it.
Yes.
Okay.
I know that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Young. I didn't have anything.
Oh, um, yeah.
I'm getting hold my back.
I've been contacted just, I can't tell y'all how many times over the last couple of years, and frankly, it's getting to the point of being, it's frustrating. And I know I've spoken to the city manager quite a bit, we've had long conversations about it. And it's tiresome because I get contacted so often, they're all, it's all legal, they're giving out cash. And I said, well, prove it. And then I was aware, you know, that we've worked a lot of cases, your department, and that's not for me to discuss with people, they don't need to know. And I don't need to know what you're doing. And so it's frustrating, but I've had a lot of contact. And some of it, you know, I'm the kind of guy that just believes people ought to be able to do what they want as long as they follow the law. So I get some contacts from people who just don't like that activity. Well, it's legal, state of Texas says it's legal, it's not really something we can just outlaw. But I do, I was really appreciative to see this idea, the moratorium, I think it's a great idea, and take a long, hard look. And some of the ideas and changes that I'm sure you guys could think of, I've mentioned to the city manager, and she said, yeah, we've already thought of that too, and we can increase the permit fee possibly, you know? If we have to send an officer to every darn one of them every other day just to check in and be visible, just to calm some of it down, I don't know, that takes money, you know? So there's, I hope y'all look at every possible way to encourage them to comply with our rules and laws. And I know there's been frustration on what the district attorney's office will accept too. You can do a lot of work into something, and they're not interested in taking the case. Is that a true statement?
Well.
I don't want to put you on the spot with him, but.
They're willing to take the case as long as certain criteria are met.
Okay, okay. That's a pretty, yeah, that won't get you in trouble there.
That was a very political answer.
That's, yeah, yeah. But, you know, it's just, people are passionate about these things, the ones that are opposed to them. And I've had to, man, y'all have had no contact hardly? Tom, you have?
Not really.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna send them to y'all. And I don't mind it, I'm just saying, it's obviously an issue for people. So I'm glad, this is a good thing, I appreciate you doing the work to put this together, so.
Well, they seem to run in two different ways, and one would be people that just don't like them at all.
Yeah.
Then there'll be a percentage of people that says they're not operating legally. And so, you know, it's back and forth. Probably 20% say they just don't like them, 80% know they're running illegally or feel that they are. In their mind, they know, so they don't think it's right.
Yeah.
And there is limited things we can do, but we should be able to come up with a solution on this.
And there's been some good ideas, I think, come up already. I don't, I think it's time, we don't need to be mentioning those now, but let these guys do their work, but, okay.
Chief, the problem, you know, you said there's 25 here, and there's a proliferation of new applications. Is this happening elsewhere with other municipalities?
I don't know if they're experiencing the same level of increase that we're experiencing. I know typically, I can tell you that of late, last couple of months, it seems like there have been many that have come in that are, quite frankly, it's surprising that we're seeing this many right now. So I can't compare it to some of the other cities, I'm not, I don't know if they're doing the same thing.
Okay. Any further questions for the chief? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
There are 11 items on the consent agenda tonight that'll be approved by a single vote, and they are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 17, 2018. Second, a resolution awarding the fire station number one roof replacement project to Trumble Construction Incorporated, doing business as RBT Roofing, in the amount of $108,358.72, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project, and declaring an effective date. Third, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Fund of Balance Incorporated in the amount of $90,491.19 for the purchase of installation of solar lights in Hopkins Park, and declaring an effective date. Fourth, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the renewal of an annual supply contract for wastewater sludge de-watering polymer with Fort Bend Services Incorporated in the amount of $2,944 per 2,300-pound tote, for a total of approximately $44,160, based on an estimated annual quantity of 15 totes, and declaring an effective date. Fifth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the renewal of an annual supply contract for liquid sulfur dioxide with DPC Industries Incorporated in the amount of $789 per one-ton cylinder for a total of approximately $44,973, based on an estimated quantity of 57 cylinders, and declaring an effective date. Sixth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual supply contract for liquid ferrous sulfate with Altivia Chemicals LLC in the amount of $104 per liquid ton for a total of approximately $41,760, based on an estimated annual quantity of 400 liquid tons, and declaring an effective date. Seventh is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of an annual supply contract for liquid ferrous chloride with Penko Incorporated in the amount of $224 per liquid ton for a total of approximately $59,136, based on an estimated annual quantity of 264 liquid tons, and declaring an effective date. Eighth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual supply contract for liquid chlorine with Brent Tag Southwest Incorporated in the amount of $633 per liquid ton for a total of approximately $136,095, based on an estimated quantity of 215 liquid tons, and declaring an effective date. The ninth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the renewal of an annual supply contract for liquid ammonium sulfate with Brent Tag Southwest Incorporated in the amount of $185 per liquid ton for a total of approximately $30,895, based on an estimated quantity of 167 liquid tons, and declaring an effective date. Tenth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual supply contract for liquid phosphate-based corrosion inhibitor with Brent Tag Southwest Incorporated in the amount of $755.80 per liquid ton for a total of approximately $56,685, based on an estimated quantity of 75 liquid tons, and declaring an effective date. And finally, number 11 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual supply contract for liquid sodium chloride with international dioxide incorporated in the amount of $996.04 per liquid ton for a total of approximately $119,524.88, based on an estimated annual quantity of 100 liquid, 120 liquid tons, and declaring an effective date.
Very nice. I thought this was the meeting you usually let Allison read all those.
I tried to, and I couldn't get out of this one.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Yeah, Donald, that's a lot of money you're spending, that's all, they're all yours. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, thank you. Okay, we'll do, on the action items here, let's do 1, 2, and 7, if y'all don't mind. And then what I thought we would do is Gilbert will come up and give us the budget, which is 3 and 4 under the city manager reports, and then we could vote on 2, 4, 5, 6 as a block afterwards, okay? A little better order there.
Which agenda do you have, 'cause?
Uh-oh.
Because you just said something about voting on 2, 4, and I'm not sure.
3, 4, 5, 6, we'll vote as a group. Those are all related to the tax rate and the budget. Did I do?
Just so April can keep the minutes straight, and we know which one you're calling.
Yes, ma'am. So one, again, we'll just start, we'll do 1, 2, and 7 right now. Is that, everybody agree? Okay.
Item E1 is a resolution appointing one new member and reappointing two current members to the Planning Commission, and declaring an effective date. Mayor and council, we have blanks in the resolution, as we often do, to fill in the new member name. And I have ballots here, as we do often, with five applicants for those spot, for that one spot. I'll read the names, and I'll remind the public that we do not use secret balloting here. These ballots are available to the public, they are kept in the city secretary's office. The five people who are applying are BJ Davis, Vanessa Hicks Calaway, Raquel Garza, Eric Leonard, and Helen Walker. And council members, if you'll put a number 1 at the top in case we have a runoff ballot, and then circle the name that you are voting for, and return those to me. We will tally them and get a result. All right, that is a, that is four votes for BJ Davis and three votes for Vanessa Hicks Calaway. And so we will fill in the blank in that resolution with the name BJ Davis. And then we will vote on that resolution with the name in the blank.
Okay. Do you hear a motion?
I make a motion that we reappoint the two members to the Planning Commission and Mr. BJ Davis to the third of vacancy.
Second.
We have a motion and second. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay, thank you, council. E2.
E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an advance funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation that will commit the city to a local match of $239,192 for the construction or reconstruction of sidewalks along North Navarro Street between Crestwood Drive and Airline Road, and along Houston Highway between North Laurent and Ben Wilson Streets, declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Are there any questions?
I just have one. I was looking at the begin, the begin date would be the mid spring of 2019. Is it gonna be in conjunction with the medium on Navarro?
I think the design and all.
Oh, it will?
Yes.
Okay. So they're gonna do the sidewalk on Navarro first, and then the one on Rio Grande?
It's all going to be one contract managed and led by TechStop, so I'm not sure how they will in their design and their bid, do the scheduling for that. But I would imagine that they would probably mobilize and finish the Navarro, and then remobilize and move over to Rio Grande or vice versa.
Okay.
That will be up to TechStop.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay, thank you. Number 7.
E7 is a resolution confirming the city's program for hot funds for outside agencies, setting priorities for the distribution of funds, appointing one new member from the hotel and convention industry, and reappointing five current members to the Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds Committee, and declaring an effective date. Mayor and council, we have one application for position on this resolution. I have passed it around to you. Her name is Brenda Guajardo. She's the Director of Sales at the Courtyard Marriott. We do try to have two hoteliers on the committee, and as the Director of Sales at the Courtyard, we're pleased with her experience and what she would bring to the committee. We've talked with her, and she's excited for the opportunity to be on the committee as well. We can do formal ballots, but since there's only one name, if somebody wants to just simply make a motion to approve the resolution with that name in it.
I'll make a motion to reappoint the five current members to the Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds Committee, as well as Mrs. Brenda Guajardo to fill the vacant slot for hotelier.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any, is there any discussion from anybody about this committee? Ricky, you look like you want to say something.
I appreciate they're willing to serve.
Yeah, I, I second that, very much so. So, yeah, this is the group that goes through the hot fund applications and helps vet all that for us, it's very appreciated. Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay, that passes. So now, we will let Mr. Gilbert there deliver the budget, the tax roll, and then we'll go back up and vote on 3, 4, 5, and 6 that are all related to him.
Thank you, mayor. I still have five minutes, I'm gonna try to make that work.
Okay.
By the way, Darryl, you looked good in pink, I mean, purple. I don't know if y'all noticed, but this is Gilbert, that's Darryl. Counsel, mayor, tonight, you were handed out the budget for the 2019 fiscal year. Couple of comments, is that the budget that's in front of you mimics all the information we talked about back in June, various different days workshops, budget workshops. There is some difference on 2018, because I'll do still projecting out the numbers, but the 19's pretty solid, so keep that in mind. Now, one thing that's not in the budget right now that you, that's in there is the health fund. As you were, we still kind of massaging that. On August 21st, we'll be bringing forward the health fund budget, along with Cheryl, the HR director, making a formal presentation for everybody to see the change of proposed recommendations. So that'll be on the 21st. In addition to that, in the budget, you have a transmail letter. I encourage everybody and the public to read it. Also, there's a budget calendar. We're gonna have several different work sessions, public hearings, to have a lot of discussion about it. The budget will, along with the transmail letter and the budget calendar, will be put on the city's website tomorrow morning, okay? So everybody can look at it at the same time. Other than that, I have no other comments about the budget, just happy reading. We'll have a test in a couple of weeks. I know Ms. Scott would have questions for me.
Yes, sir. I will.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have some. What is the ending fund balance percentage in this budget?
Which fiscal year, sir?
1819.
1819.
Would it be budgeted as an, what is the ending?
About 14 million.
Percent-wise?
Probably says about 28, 27%.
Really, okay. Over our 25% policy.
25 plus two, two and a half notch above that.
Okay. Did you used to put together a graphic or a list of where all the money goes irregardless of fund? I think I had asked Charmel about that at one point.
Long, long time ago.
I thought you did, and then when I kind of.
But I kind of.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to bring it out again, but, you know, I don't want these faces looking at me again when doing this, but.
No, no, I, and I don't, I'm so busy lately, I apologize. I would do a better job of outside this meeting explaining what I'd like to see. The public generally doesn't understand the difference between all the funds we have, they just generally don't. So when you try to say, hey, where does all the money go? If you start talking in terms of general fund and water, wastewater fund, they don't, you know, and I don't blame, I'm not.
I understand that.
We're, you know, number, what's the number one expenditure of this city? You know, what's the number two, what's the number three?
That's easy to do.
Doesn't matter about broken down in funds, so.
I can work with the city manager, we can come up with something, maybe we can come up during the work, next budget meetings, and we can hand that out.
You mean something like a pie chart?
Yeah, you know, you remember that graphic with the dollar, you still use it? That I found another entity in Texas using, and I sent it to you.
I think it was Houston ISD or somebody, I don't know.
It was Houston ISD, yeah. It was, it was an interesting graphic, they spent a lot of time explaining where everything goes. It's going, a little bit larger budget than our.
They do have a larger budget, they hire somebody to make that nice presentation.
Yeah, but I'll bet.
I'd be happy to do that if you gave me the money.
I bet some people in OC's department got some good skills at that, but anyway, okay. Well, I'll, I just would like, I think that would be nice, that's all.
Okay.
I won't believe it.
Officer Collins is gonna have a couple of handouts. One handout, I know you enjoy reading this, is actually the effective tax rate calculation worksheet, so you can see where the numbers coming from, along with some of the legal documents from the states that goes with it. And I have a quick, brief PowerPoint presentation to talk about the appraisals. Thought it'd be interesting, if not, just bear with me. All right. I'll wait a few minutes. Can you have the other one? Okay. Okay, well, he's working on that. Before you is the kind of summary, I'm not gonna present every detail behind these numbers. I kind of rolled it up from a summary standpoint. You have the 18 tax row, and you have the last year's tax rows. And of course, you got percent change. Bottom line, the ARB, which is basically the appraisal board that's being approved, finalized, will look about a close to 3% decrease from last year's certified tax rows. And I have other slides to kind of help you understand where the decrease is coming from. Appraisals under protest, just to recap, those are appraisals that, of course, are on the protest, and the valuation being used is last year's tax rows valuation, not the new appraisal values. So that's that line. The good news about that line is it went down by 56%, meaning that the board's doing a great job trying to get those things wrapped up by July 25th. Frozen appraisal values, pretty straightforward, 65 and over, and some other items to qualify on the exemption, increased by close to 1%. The net difference your taxable price value, with that number is actually, or in this case, it's down by 4.4% from last year. Your net taxable price value is what you generate in income to fund your general operate, general fund operation and your debt service payments. It does not include the frozen collection money. Those are below, because as you were, when you froze your property, you can go up all you want. when you froze your property, you can go up all you want, but their frozen payment stays the same, okay? The next line, taxable appraisal value is that line, we get approximately $3 million in frozen value dollars, I have to extrapolate that, work that back and come up with an appraisal value, and it comes out to those numbers there, we had an increase which I expect every year increases, one day I'll be in that line item.
Say that again, how much is that frozen value?
Close to $3 million. Oh, the value? It's right there.
Well, yeah, I, I had.
But in dollars, we collect about $3 million. In hard dollars.
I was asking more what we lost.
The, thank you, that, that is close to about 1.3.
Okay, I was just doing it in my calculator, I think I got it wrong then. So we're foregoing 1.3 is what you're saying.
1.2, 1.3, I keep track every year, trying to.
So that's about three cents on the tax rate overall, if we didn't have that exemption, okay.
The bottom line after you add those two numbers, you come with an adjusted taxable appraisal value, basically is what the city has that generates dollars in taxes, so this year we got a 4.1 billion, last year we had a 4.2, we had a drop of 3.5 billion, 3.5%. Now, what I'm gonna do next is I'm kind of focused on the certified tax row, what makes up that 4.2 billion is the following slide, what you have here, I break it down into categories, I don't know if you've ever seen the tax row, but it has, so I lump them in residential and mobile homes with land, other than ag, commercial, utility, industrial, agriculture, and tax exempt property. So if you, that same number on the bottom is what you saw on the front page, the first slide, but bottom line, your residential compared to last year, pretty flat. Counsel, this is as a whole lump sum, okay? I don't know that house versus this house and all that, I'm giving whole numbers in each category, so there might be several houses that went down, there might be a few houses that stayed the same and some houses that may, might went up, but the overall, when you compare the whole numbers, it's pretty flat, 0.1, so it's like it didn't move hardly as an overall gross total, net of exemptions. Land, other than ag, went up slightly, 7.7, the biggest hit that was very noticeable is on the commercial industrial utilities, that went down by 7.8%. Agriculture went down a little bit and your tax exempt property went down. Tax exempt property do pay taxes because sometimes tax exempt property doesn't qualify for exemption, like you can have a, I can give you an example, this, City of Austin has a building they rent out, that portion of the building is not taxable, it's not exempt anymore, so, but it's classified as tax exempt, but it's taxable, it's kind of war game playing, but it's taxable, but that dropped, but overall, again, a 2.9% decrease. Any questions? Yes, I knew, I seen you.
Why was there such a large movement in agricultural?
I couldn't, I, I would have to dig into that, I noticed that, I don't, I can't give you an answer, I have to go through all the numbers.
When I saw that, I kind of thought, it's, since it's just in the city limits, the, it would be easy to change a lot, it's not a big number, you change a lot in one year, it's not, you know, all the ag's out of the city limits.
Well, you gotta keep in one thing, it, it moves from category too.
Yeah.
It might have been in ag last year, it might jump to another category, so I can't, without going to last year and following that property, where to end up this year, there's a lot of movement, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, well, is the percentage just stood out?
Yeah, it's, it's there, that.
As a, as a, it's not our largest number on here.
On the surface, it's a big number, we get, but you have to drill into really what makes sense of that number, it might not be that big because you might have things moving from that category to another category, I couldn't tell you.
I'll tell you, from the appraisal district standpoint, they spent a better, a lot of time last year going through all the ag exempt properties and double checking that they were still ag exempt and that ag exemptions were current.
Yep.
And rules were being followed for those ag exemptions, so I would take.
Yeah.
Some of that drop in the number on reclassification of land.
There's also a 20 acre rule, I believe.
That, that's another key point right there, is that 20 thing came in this year that changed the whole perspective, you know, and if you have less than 20 acres, you're not exempt, that's it, it's done.
Which is probably a good thing because we had so many properties around town, somebody put an old beat up cow on there just to get an ag exempt on a couple acres.
Easy, easy.
It's true. Yeah.
So, just as a general observation, because we've been through a hurricane in this, in this cycle, and there's been a lot of concern and speculation about what the impact was going to be on the tax values, but this is looking good from the standpoint that we're not having a huge hit in the values going down, am I correct? I'm not.
Well, I'm not sure, but if I agree with a comment, now, if the comment says that we might have expected a huge decrease because of the hurricane. That's mixed in with some other improvements, so I couldn't, you know, you know, I would have to drill into it, but really, you're going down, so it's not really, you're taking a hickey no matter what.
I guess.
If you want to say that we expected a hu, a bigger loss because we thought that the hurricane was doing, yes, you could say that. But it, it turns out to be there were some other items that offset that situation, you might have some new improvements, I'm not sure, but there were some other items that came to play that overall, as one lump sum.
Right.
Mitigate the total deal, so.
Also, if you were able to find a contractor and get your insurance settled or whatever before January 1st and get those, your improvements or repairs done, then you couldn't, when they sent out that notice January 1st, please send us pictures of your damage or whatever that's still existing as of January 1st.
Okay.
You were able to.
You already had your repairs done and you couldn't.
Correct.
Ask for a decrease.
Okay, Ms. Scott?
Thank you.
I'm gonna show you another slide, a different perspective on this, just, I'm showing from the overall, your total market for the cit, market values for the city, for the eighteen row is 4.8 billion, last year is 4.9, that's a 1.78% decrease, and then when you start considering your agriculture exemptions, your homestead exemptions, and your market value exemptions, you end up with that certified tax row that I've been showing you in the previous slides, as you can tell, I expected the market exemption to go up, why, because you got the senior citizens, frozen property, you got other abatements and everything else in there too involved, homestead, what's interesting, it dropped, that was very interesting, I couldn't explain that one. But the agriculture exemption kind of follows, your other item that your taxable kind of moved off to, that's moving too. Any questions?
No, I'm sorry, I was.
No, I, I know.
Since Jeff's our rep on that board, that homestead, probably same thing, they probably went through and verified them all and found a bunch that weren't applicable.
I need Jeff to come up here.
And that's good, we're paying them to do it, I'm glad they're doing good jobs.
I, I gotta give my hats off to appraisers, compare them 10, 15 years ago, they're doing a great job.
Yep.
Awesome job.
Gilbert, what's the, the normal percent change of the market value exemption historically? Do you recall? Is it close to 8.5, is it seven?
The exemption, anywhere from five to eight, easy.
Okay.
I just know, just on the frozen values, they've been increasing easy over 3%, maybe this year being an exception to that, but it's been all there. Our population is kind of getting to higher enchilada, so you can see that number increasing.
It's an aging population.
Speak for yourself.
I didn't want to say that word because I'm part of that population.
That's how it is.
Maturing. Anyway, that's all I have on this slide, I want to show you one more slide, well, actually, no, I'm lying to you, this slide, it's just for FYI, I just wanted to, the whole purpose of this slide, I'm not gonna go through each category because it's the same information, but what I want to point out here is that you got the line on your net taxable appraisal value, that's, you saw that, that's the money that's being generated on your general fund and debt service. In order to calculate the effective tax rate, you have to subtract the new improvements. Bottom line, in 2018, we only had 17.5 million dollars in new improvements, when you take that out, now you got 3.5 billion, compared to last year, I hate to use, I should, I need to fix this, but really, you need to compare that 3.6 to 3.7 billion up there, because last year's $39 million new improvements, it's in that ARB number, technically, so if you compare the 3.5 billion to 3.7 billion, you have a drop of about 4.8%, which explains, I know it's a bunch of numbers, Gilbert, tell me what that means, explains why your effective tax rate jumped so much, it's a huge increase, okay? I just, if you want to look at the numbers and especially if you want to look at that effective tax rate calculation, see how it flows, these numbers mimic those things, that's the only reason I threw that up there, I'm not gonna spend much more time on this, okay? Talk about tax rate, I know y'all are interested in this part. Total tax rate for the 19s being proposed is the same as the effective tax rate, 62.27. If you compare that to the number I presented back in June, I missed it by .0024, not bad. But anyway. So, last year, we went up by one cent, remember that, counsel? We added an officer and some other things, so that's, that explains that one penny, but in 19, we stayed in the effective tax rate, the rollback tax rate per the city resolution that we passed years ago is 63.9, but the state, which kind of governs everything, it's much higher, that's about 64. something, okay? So, basically, we're okay with the ordinance and the state, but the proposed tax rate for this year is 64.24, and the only reason the increase is because we, I know people don't like this word, but the taxes go up because you want to generate the same level income you did last year. Overall, when we're talking revenues dollars, the general fund will see an increase of about $132,000, that's a point, 0.87%. The increase consists of 61 thou, these are eight, at 97% collection rate, okay, it's not 100%. $61,000 is associated to the new improvement, that's 17.6 million dollars, portion of that is coming to the general fund, that's new money, new tax, never been taxed before, and then 71,000 is a result of that, when they present, when they give us a tax row on July 21st, we have a working number. Throughout the months after that, August, July, August, September, and so on, you have supplements to the tax row, changes, adjustments, and everything else, plus, we paid out a total refunds back to people who paid, $95,000. There's a reason why you're showing $71,000 more increase because that's a result of the effective tax rate, in other words, saying that, that you didn't collect that money, so we're gonna adjust your tax, your effective tax rate and you get another $71,000, that's what that does. So overall, that explains the $132,000 increase, one cent, we're bringing in that 97% of 342,000, 343,000 dollars, okay? Questions? Now, bear with me on this, make sure you understand, the valuation of the house is still flat, I don't know which house went up 1%, I don't know which house went down once, so I just made a slide saying, assuming you kept a flat rate, I mean, flat valuation, that's all I'm doing here, and of course, assuming you have a homestead exemption on this house, this is your effect on that house, if you compare the 19 taxes to the 18, and on the last farhand right is your increase per the type of valuation. Okay? Majority of the houses fall within that $34. Yes, sir.
Y'all understand that slide? Okay. I'm not sure I do.
Okay.
Well, that's just the city taxes, that doesn't include all the other entities, that's why.
So what I'm saying is, if I had a house that was valued $50,000 last year, I'm saying that house is still valued at $50,000, because I have no idea which one up 1%, one went down 1%, okay?
Got you.
Because my overall valuation for residential stayed at .97.
I understand.
I couldn't tell you which one, so I say, I'm gonna make one graph, you need to go look at your valuation and then do your calculation, subtract your tax exemption and then.
I don't recall you ever doing that before. Have you?
I have.
Maybe I just forgot.
I have.
Okay. I got you.
Especially when the, when the, when the appraisers go up, it's, I, I increase the valuations from one year to the, yeah, but this case is like, I don't know which one went up, so I just gave you a general idea of what you can expect. I'm not saying these are where the taxes, I'm saying this is the general idea, okay?
Yeah, let me clarify something on this, you know, this, this, some of you have been here for a long time, you know, there's a lot of drama around these discussions years ago, so, we're not voting on the tax rate yet, that's, we're gonna actually set the dates to vote on that in a few months, but we are not proposing any tax increase, so that's, we're real clear here, I don't think unless something changes between now and August when the seven of us vote on it, it will be the effective tax rate, which is not a tax increase, so, I used to have to make that real clear and I just thought, well, let me do that again real quick. That slide would lead some, could confuse people, I think, confused me for a moment there, but, thank you.
It's because of the valuations that I was talking about earlier.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
And the, even though it's not the hit that we might have expected, there still is a reduction in the value.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Well, when I got on, we were at 70 and a half cents tax rate, and we've gone down on the rate most of the years, yet we still raised more money, so we're not going up on the taxes, it's, it's difficult to make that association, but that problem is based upon the way we're required to calculate this. Really doesn't match reality.
I have no comments for that discussion, but I just know we're generating the same level of income we did last year.
Yep.
That's all I have, mayor, on those two items from the city manager report, other items are just on the resolution itself.
Okay, do y'all have any questions at this point, counsel? Okay, if not, what we'll do, go ahead and read E three, four, five, and six, can we just vote as a group on those, everyone is comfortable doing that as one, okay, go ahead, sir.
Sure, E three is a resolution calling for a public hearings on the 2018-2019 City of Victoria budget on August 23rd, 2018, August 28th, 2018, September 4th, 2018, and September 11th, 2018, at 5:00 PM each night at the city council chambers here at 107 West Wanlin Street and declaring an effective date. E four is a resolution proposing a tax rate of 0.6224 dollars per $100 of valuation, placing a proposal to adopt the tax rate on the agenda of future meeting as an action item and calling for public hearings on this proposed tax rate and declaring an effective date. E five is a resolution authorizing the publication of the notice of the 2018 tax year proposed property tax rate in accordance with section 140.010 of the Local Government Code and Rules of the Texas Comptroller, as calculated, effective tax rate data has been delivered to the city by the tax assessor and declaring an effective date. And E six is a resolution appointing Gilbert P. Rainan Jr., CPA, as the representative to perform the effective tax rate and rollback calculations according to section 26.04C of the Texas Tax Code and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second, last chance for any discussion on these items, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay.
Thank you.
And, yes ma'am, go right ahead.
Since I was gonna do this under the city manager deal with budget, I gave you Main Street's budget request for 1819 fiscal year, you know, you may remember when we presented, I guess that was two weeks ago, that they were asking for 75,000, and I had, but I had said I put 60,000 in there, which is the current rate, I did meet with Mary Helen Barick, the director, the additional money is for the part-time person, they're considered an urban Main Street program, which the state regulations say they have to have two employees, and so that's, so that additional 15,000 is for that second person, she's had a part-time person in the past, so, so, and I don't need an answer tonight on that, when we bring back the first vote of the budgets, the 23rd, y'all can make a decision whether you want to increase it from the 60 to 75,000.
Thank you for finding that out.
Sure.
Okay, you have a couple of other items?
Are we to city manager's report now?
Yes, we are, I believe, unless I miss something.
No, you did, no, you're good, so the, Darryl's gonna talk about Gardenville's, our composting facility, the increase to third-party, parties that drop off composting.
Yes, July 20th, I got a call and received this letter from Gardenville that they were gonna go up on their rate that they charge for untreated lumber, so we, we accept that from a couple of different customers here in town, Caterpillar being the largest, this comes in in roll-off boxes, it's turned into compost, and I asked, they wanted to make that effective first, I asked them to move it back to the sixth, which they agreed to do, so it. So it actually started this week instead of last week. We wanted to make sure that they got notification out to their, to their customers and gave them plenty of time to make adjustments. And so it started, I, by contract, we really have no say in what their third-party pricing is. I do expect them to come back at some point in the future. Looking at third-party pricing just for brush and trees. This does not affect the rates that they charge the city. They can only do that once a year, and I bring that to counsel every October. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is one contract we will go out to bid, what, this fall?
This, probably within the next forty-five days. We have already sent them notice to cancel the contract. I do expect them to bid on it. But we've been reaching out to other companies as well.
They accept pallets?
Yes, sir. Untreated pallets. Most of, when Caterpillar came to town, they needed a way to get rid of all of their, they want everything recycled as much as possible. We were able to work with them to take their lumber, that's untreated lumber. So all their pallets, all their crates, all of that goes out there.
Don't have to remove screws and nails and?
The nails, no. We have had some issues in the past with big chunks of metal, but we've been able to get those worked out.
Yeah, I didn't, thank you. I didn't know either. That's interesting.
We, we put it separately. That's really a highly sought-after type of mulch, that untreated wood, because it's, it's not gonna carry any type of seeds or anything like that. So, you know, they, they try and keep that separated, and they can sell that oftentimes rather than just for compost.
If you've never been out there and you're bored one day, go check it out. It's interesting, the pots and the, all the stuff they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darrell. So the last report is on Leary Lane side. You can go ahead and get it. I'm not gonna talk that long, Donald. So, you know, we've talked, we've discussed recently on possibility of trying to build the sidewalk on Leary Lane. So we've also discussed three possible options, which you have before you. And Donald has a map showing where the option one would be, is what we're recommending. So option one is where we'd put the sidewalk behind the ditch. I'm saying behind the ditch. We would not be piping the ditch. It's the most cost-effective option. And then two is where you pipe the ditch with a four-foot sidewalk on both. And three is where you pipe and then increase the width of the sidewalk. And Dar, I meant, not Darrell, you just became the finance director. Gilbert. Gilbert, you know, Gilbert showed you options on how we could pay for this out of the general fund. If this is what counsel wishes to do. It's not.
So I have to look at yours.
Okay, that's fine. So Donald, you wanna walk through your map that you set up there?
You, you pretty much covered it.
Can you see?
You did a great, you did a great job. Okay, go ahead.
Miss Garrett's correct. As you recall, back in the budget work session, I made, I showed you an option if you want to do Larry Lane. It was about five hundred thousand dollars and change. This one, I think it's a little less. So it's not in the budget right now, but if you agree to and all that, we'll come back with a, through in the budget process, and we'll amend the budget to include it. Yes, sir.
Gilbert, in the, in E two, when we were talking about the sidewalk program and we switched programs to another one, which then initially, we had a, I think, I think a local match that we had agreed to for four hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-two thousand, and it went down to two forty. Did we had already have that, that money earmarked?
That's sales tax money.
But did we have that earmarked, the four, the, so we saved two hundred thousand dollars?
The sales tax corporation did.
Okay.
We can't use sales tax on this.
Let me, let me add to it. We, we just spent all that money on the placido.
Okay.
Well, we couldn't, we can't use sales tax on this side.
No, no, no. I didn't know where that money was coming from.
But the money, the sales tax was gonna fund that, so I took that money away. But we also went as sales tax to also help pay for the over, the bit costs on the placido side.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Do these numbers include us building sidewalk on the school district's property?
Yes, these numbers, these numbers do. This, this, these numbers include us building all of the sidewalk. So if there's any opportunities to partner, of course, of course, those costs would be reduced.
I think we should do that. I don't, I don't know, counsel. I think we should stop at the edge of their property and let them design their own.
Thirteen cents.
I just can't imagine a school that doesn't have a sidewalk around it. And I don't know why they never had it, but.
They expect us to do it. Always have.
I think, you know, I would be open to.
Thirteen cents says they can do it.
I would be open to possibly using the same contractor, maybe cost sharing or something along those lines as opposed to just stopping. But I, I agree, you know, they've, they've got enough pavement. Once you get to the school property, I think we should work with them.
I definitely agree with you there. Invite them to participate and, yeah, since we've got the contractor and everything, so. Oh, that's, you know, I'm not gonna miss words. That's been a little bone of contention about sidewalks historically around all their schools in town. I know, Mr. Halpaska, you're well aware of the historical kind of aggravation when they want us to do that. And so, you know, I mean, we impose that on private people who build and design things and have to pay for their sidewalks. So it's not that we don't care. I mean, it's important for the safety of the kiddos, but I'm sure they have their own interest in the safety too, more so than us. So, yeah, let's reach out to them and see what they say.
We're glad to.
Okay.
Okay. So going through this proposed project quickly. As Charmel mentioned, we're proposing to build a sidewalk on the backside of the ditch. In this overview here, the red line would be the sidewalk, and the black dash line is where the ditch line is. This area right here is Roland Elementary. We're heading, this isn't actually east, it's kind of northeast the way the orientation is. But this is AEP Yard. We've got the same similar construction there. Next to it is the only section of ditch about two hundred and eighty feet that we will actually have to pipe because of conflicting parking lot at this storage facility. The rest of this is all very similar construction as it goes down towards John Stockbury. This section right here, because of the way the land is, is platted, we have plenty of room right here. We do not have to acquire any easement for this section. I, I believe that's the case. And then we move on, and this is Twin Pines here, and then the bowling alley, and then we get to John Stockbury. That's roughly two thousand eight hundred linear feet of, of four-foot sidewalk, ADA compliant four-foot sidewalk. And the cost on that one is about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Going the right direction. Thank you for reworking the numbers.
No problem.
Yeah, we just need kind of a consensus if you want us to add this back to the budget so y'all, we can amend the budget. And this is a project we want us to do for nineteen. And again, you don't have to tell us tonight, we can, but I would think by the twenty-third, we'd like to know.
Can you slide that back down?
Sure.
Back towards Roland?
But we do have a crosswalk at the other intersection there, a little bit further to the left.
If we could get the school district to help us, could we go with option two and go ahead and put that pipe in there? That we wouldn't have to come back years later and put pipe in there?
Well, I, I'm, not to speak for the school district, but with historical conversations with them, they will say they can only spend money on their property. So Donald, what did you tell me the estimate was if they built their sidewalk? Eight or ten thousand dollars?
Somewhere right in there. It's not, it's not a lot.
So there's not a much, enough delta there to cover the cost?
In the past, that's what it's been. They are prohibited by state law from spending money on anything that they don't own. So when they put in the Rudolph Torres School on Lone Tree, if you recall, we had to put in all that sidewalk. They were not able to help, even if they wished to, which they, I don't think they did, but, but they were prohibited from it because they could go put that school anywhere.
I don't need that one.
Then we are on the hook, the city's on the hook to provide for that.
The other, the other item to consider is that putting that sidewalk on the other side of the ditch leaves a little bit more space between the roadway and where you have your, your, your students walking. So it's actually a little bit safer of an option.
Option one is safer?
Yes, the option that's presented on the board is actually a little safer. There's more of a buffer zone between the vehicles and the students that are walking.
Guess that is a recognition that we can jump a sidewalk easier than we can jump to a ditch.
I'm okay with adding it. I mean, we can wait till the budget time because this, this is a reoccurring, something's been brought up to me repeatedly for a decade. And, you know, Jan, I appreciate it. You've kind of been pushing on this. So I'm, I'm okay if y'all can find the money and put in the current, this upcoming budget. So we, but we, again, we don't have to make that decision.
Right, and it's a one-time expense, not a reoccurring expense, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, it is worth asking the city, or asking the school district if, if they even want a sidewalk in that area. I mean, not on the rest of Leary, but on their property, they may not want one. We would end up with a sidewalk that stopped at their property instead. I know it's not that much of a difference, but it's taxpayer dollars regardless.
But then you wouldn't be taking into account the students, you know, the safety of the students, and that's where we come in. And I think, you know, for ten thousand dollars, I don't think that we want that.
Pardon me?
I said for a difference of ten thousand dollars, I don't think we want that on our heads.
I don't think it'd be on our heads. I don't think it'd be on our heads.
Well, in the school district, no, but I mean, look what we're doing with Ben Wilson. We're putting in a whole new street to cross Ben Wilson. So I don't see why we can't do this.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with you on that. But, but looking at this layout, can you, where do the kids that are walking, where do they go into the school from this side? Do they go on this horseshoe, or do they go down the parking lot, or?
I'm, I'm not familiar with the school as far as where the students go in.
The main entrance of that school is at that horseshoe. My kids went there several years ago.
They would probably.
Okay, so.
A little red here, just like this is a sidewalk around. They would come here so that they could come in that way.
So the only thing that theoretically wouldn't be that useful would be that, just the red line in the horseshoe, but the rest of it would still be useful. Yeah.
Well, you've got the howl traffic from house.
Right, but they, they come to the horseshoe on the other side.
They're not gonna walk around.
Got a lot of traffic there on that horseshoe.
Anyway.
I think too, you've got high school students walking down Leary Lane.
Okay. So that sidewalk's worth it.
So they wouldn't be going to the horseshoe?
So did I, did I get a sense that?
You can show us where the one-time money in, I'm.
Oh, yeah, Gilbert did that with the general. It's your, a difference on your reserve. So what, excess reserves?
Excess over.
Yeah, that's kind of.
And that was, did he have the estimate at six sixty at that time?
Did you estimate, Gilbert, what'd you estimate then?
You're not gonna change the number if I tell you. Five eighty.
Pardon me?
Five eighty.
Five eighty, okay. It was higher than where we are now. So I've asked, like I said, I've asked you to work the numbers. Thank you for doing what you can.
Is there any other project around a half a million that is higher priority than that sidewalk?
That's a question for you.
I'm not, well, that's exactly right. I don't know that we've had anything. I mean, our, when we put the budget together with that delta, it was at y'all's discretion, you know, for you to decide if there was anything that was popping. We didn't have anything that we were bringing forward at that time, so. Are you gonna contradict what I just said?
Hell, no. That's on live mic too, wasn't it? No, but I just want to make sure, we also remember that we have some other street project coming down the pipe that we don't know what the bits can come in at as well. So we still got the Crestwood that's can come in, you know, Placidomingo, it was two point four million dollars. Did I say that right? I keep saying Placid.
Been a beaters.
Anyway. So we have that. We also got, we're looking at the Springwood subdivision, a, a street project too. Those two, we gotta look at that. So no, it's not, i- i- it's not on the horizon, but there's some other probably dangling project that you might be able to use after you submit this project in the budget. You might have some left or maybe we need to use to plug in some gaps once we know those numbers. That's all I'm saying. If we need to.
It, it would be a project I would think we'd wait until the summer to do and not try to do it during the middle of school. So you wait, and then you end up needing that money for something else you can move in.
We'll have a better financial picture.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm starting to worry about some of the, you know, Crestwood, I can see that estimate going up even with the concrete because of the rebar. I'm seeing tons of increases in steel, even though the tariffs are barely even taking effect, but.
Yes, sir.
It's just, this, this is such, such big public safety, and it's come up so many times. We all, excuse me, we all know it, we've all identified it. It's just a question of saying, why isn't it a priority?
So put it in the budget, and by the time we get around to it, we'll have a better feel. We'll do it if all possible. If we can't, we can't.
Yep.
Okay. Is that good enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is that all that you have?
Yes, sir.
We do have an executive session, so, and we'll go across to the other building for that, so.
Sure. The city council will recess, recess for executive session on the seventh day of August at six ten, six oh five PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the Texas State Bar clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Business Act, including but not limited to Redburn versus the City of Victoria. And second, the Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point zero seven four, with regard to personnel matters, including but not limited to the city attorney. Thank you.
Okay.